So we're going to go ahead and call our regular meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Johnson to leave us an indication.
Hello, pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us all be here today through these unconventional conditions. They're outside in rain. We hadn't seen it in a while. Lord, please be with us as we go about the town's business. Please be with the folks of this town as we, as we make decisions and, and hopefully steal our lives and our lives as well. We ask these things in Jesus's name. We pray. Amen.
Amen. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
No, to approve.
All right, go first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? That motion carries endlessly. Next up, we got a proclamation for Franklin County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month. Bear with me, it's lengthy. So Franklin County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month, November, whereas for over twenty-five years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and Franklin County Interfaith Council has served this population for over six years, and whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Franklin County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations, and whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness. They include Sowing Seeds, Tar River Cowboy Church, Our Lady of the Rosary, St. Paul's Presbyterian Church, Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, Allen Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, Franklinton Seventh-day Adventist Church, and Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina, and whereas the theme of Franklin County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month is to speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are marginalized. Speak up and judge fairly. Defend the rights of the poor and needy. Proverbs thirty-one, eight, and nine. And whereas the Franklin County Interfaith Council recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Franklin County, and whereas the intent of Franklin County Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month is consistent with the activities of Safe Space, Franklin Vance, Warren Opportunities Incorporated, Franklin County Partners in Health, A Blessing Incorporated, and Ben Franklin Society. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners for Youngsville, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim November two, two thousand and twenty-four, as Franklin County Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, public, and nonprofit service entities. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Youngsville to be affixed this fourteenth day, November two thousand and twenty-four. I didn't want to make you stand up for that whole thing.
Thank you for giving the support and sending the proclamation. This is an issue in Franklin County, particularly affordable housing. So any, any support you can bring in that endeavor, we would appreciate. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation, Community Policing Exercise, Officer Andrew Teetz, Appointment of Police Officers as Agents. I shall yield, yield the floor.
How are you doing, Commissioner?
Good.
Um, so we've got Andrew Teetz. He's an eight-year officer that we got from Capitol Special Police Department. He was a sergeant there. He was working during the municipality side. We had him. We used to call this the Neighborhood Portfolio. That's what you guys were used to hear. We changed it. Neighborhood Portfolio worked, except our guys were getting creative and going outside of the neighborhoods. They were going to the businesses. They were going to the roadways. They were doing some speed zones. They were doing what the community needed. With that, we changed it to the Community Police Exercise. So that's what we found out, the Community Police Exercise. Teetz will tell you about his, but he had a pretty good idea for something to, as our, as our, as we grow and get bigger, we, we could have issues with bad times coming upon us, more crime. We've been blessed so far to have fifty-five type one, type two crimes on our last SBI list. That's a day in Durham, just certain traction. That's a week in Lewisburg. Here, ours is low. To keep that down, Officer Teetz, who was a sergeant in his last agency, has found a way to bring the crime down and potentially keep our streets safer. So we did a really good job.
All right.
Thank you for that wonderful question. Hello, I'm Officer Andrew Teetz. Today, like we said, we'll be talking about my CP project, appointment of police officers as agents. Just the history, I got the idea from my first arrest here in Youngsville. And long for short, it was at our local feet and our three subjects there ended up being trespassed. And while I was going through that process and looking at the, the actual statute, it dawned on me that although I understand why it's written the way it is, there's also ways that we could make it better for our communities and better serve the people of Youngsville. So looking at mainly this first section here that I highlighted, which is what the APA form addressing is on the instance of another after the person had been notified not to enter or remain there by the owner, by a person in charge of the premises, or by a lawful occupant, or by another authorized person. Essentially, what that means is that someone from that business has to tell that person they are no longer allowed on property. Why is this impractical? Well, for the businesses, a lot of, you know, the storefronts stay on Main Street closed at a certain point in time. So if we have to address an issue with somebody, of course, we can go about it in the, address it criminally if needed, but we can't trespass someone from a property if that property owner is not there. So with this form, we kind of are able to get ahead of that, and the post that sign up for it allows us to trespass people from their property on their behalf. Yes, essentially, this goes around trespassing people after normal business hours, and if we cannot contact somebody from that business or from the nature of it. So how does this benefit the citizens of Youngsville? Well, it gives the business owner, business owners and communities peace of mind knowing that the Youngsville Police Department has a better way of protecting their properties, having written authorization screen block, streamlined the trespassing process, which allows law enforcement to trespass more efficiently, allowing the citizens of Youngsville to see their police department being proactive and finding better ways to serve them. Right here, this is an example of the APA form, and all you have to do is fill out the top of there, and the rest of that is just notarized. So it's a very easy form to fill out and turn back in. So with the help with my explanation, I've also made a video that will be posted to the Facebook, the Youngsville Facebook page. So. I'd like to open up to the board for any questions.
Chris. So the, the form, does that enable any YPD officer to act on their behalf? Is it blanket like that, or does it have?
For, for the entire year, when that form is signed, the, any police officer with the Youngsville Police Department will be able to act on your behalf and trespass someone from your dog.
So it has to be renewed annually?
Yeah, after twelve months.
So that's something like that you guys will keep up with if it's on file?
Yeah, honestly, I would like to see that changed. If we could get something where like, maybe maybe until the business changes or the owner changes or something like that, so that it takes off a little bit of that burden of having to do it. But, but yes.
I could also understand the twelve months too, because what you're trying to do is, is kind of curb a certain or specific behavior. So you would hope that once is, once an individual is trespassed, they're not going to be coming back. They're not going to be creating issues again. So, okay. Good deal. I like it. I'm good with it. Any additional?
What about, what about folks that did not live in a homeowner association, like a neighborhood?
So theoretically, this also works for you as both for private, you know, homeowner. I sort of tailored it more to the HOA businesses, because we typically find people more at their home than we're able to contact them easier. Where it's a business, you know, you get a phone number, my crane somewhere, you just never know. But yeah, if you would absolutely like to do that as a homeowner, you can do that.
I don't have any questions, but I'd say thank you.
You're welcome.
That could be nice.
Lemons, are they always super nervous in front of us?
Yes, sir. See them later, gold.
They're all good on the lead.
They're ready. So they are there at first, then they get over.
Fair enough. Well, y'all do a tremendous job. Thank you so much. All right, moving right along, we have no public hearings for tonight, so we'll move along into citizens' comments, and I've got a list here of a few, and I'll just start with what I've got on my top sheet here. And we have Heidi Preddy, and I'll go ahead and call Ms. Preddy up.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to do anything about the time limit?
Yeah, so generally speaking, we've got a three-minute time limit. Perfect, okay. That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Preddy. I'm a mother, wife, master of science, and director of operations and human resources for a rally company. I live at three oh two North Nassau Street with my husband, young little native, Stephen Preddy, and our daughter Letty. I've looked at this address since twenty eighteen, when he passed me down like this. Our house is located directly across the street from the stop sign at Winston and North Nassau, which is across the street from the only sidewalk that is not on Main Street in downtown Nassau. I witnessed thousands of people flying down North Nassau Street, running the Winston Street stop sign, even driving at full speed into our driveway, early avoiding collision with our current cars. Speeding down Winston Street is a cut through to avoid downtown traffic, running the stop sign across in Winston. And daily, I witnessed tens of people running the stop sign across in Franklin Mall for a walk. Later, you'll see video of Mason Rizzo showing me almost getting that intersection. People don't let us cross the street in our own neighborhood, let alone on Main Street. With the city increase in traffic, duty influx of people moving to this area, there are more cars on the road, and our local main streets are overrun and under supported. I challenge the Board of Commissioners to prioritize your own citizen safety and the flow of traffic in the North Block of downtown Nassau. It shouldn't be dangerous to walk out our doors and cross the street in what until recently was a quiet little part of town. I encourage the immediate action of the Board of Commissioners and administration to put high emphasis on street safety outside of the Main Street and lower the speed limit to twenty miles per hour or lower on the local main streets. Longer term, when you increase pedestrian visibility tools such as working street lights, larger signs that pedestrians have the right of way, crosswalks, and flashing lights at the current crosswalks, ask the Board of Commissioners and first responders to help enforce the new speed limit with speed traps and endorse traffic calming demonstrations to raise awareness of pedestrian safety for drivers that come through our towns. Also, so the Board of Commissioners can put money and effort into designing slower streets using measurable traffic impact devices to slow down drivers while continuing conversations that are already taking place surrounding these measures. I want to thank the Youngsville Police Force for their efforts to slow down traffic through the police. Local police officers cannot be on every local main street twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to mitigate the impact we need to enjoy safety in our neighborhood again. Also, a big thank you to Mason Rizzo for fighting to raise pedestrian safety awareness in our community. He has requested a planning advisory board position to serve the town as an assigned bike and pedestrian safety advisory member, and our community endorses him for this position. As such, I would like to request a meeting with him, some of our community members, town manager, assistant town manager, to discuss and understand what part of the yearly budget can be allocated for funding these pedestrian safety tools. And if no budget currently exists, I would like to understand the avenues the town is currently pursuing with the county, state, and NCDOT with meetings and potential grants, so that we are not duplicating efforts. I believe we want the same thing, a safer, more prosperous Youngsville, and my hope is that we can work together to make the necessary changes happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Preddy. Just. Didn't Letty want to say anything? You got three minutes. That show's yours. No? Okay.
He's been active in the safety.
No, understood. And I've actually got, so Madam Clerk and I were speaking about this. We've got his letter that he wrote, as well as Linda Coffey's, so we've got that for the record moving forward. So we appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right, next up, Pamela Hicks.
Sergeant Six could make tonight.
Okay, all right. I'll move along to Blair Smith.
We have three children, Ruby who is six, Juniper who is three, and we have one on the way. We were first time home buyers when we purchased our home a year and a half ago. We were excited to find the home of our dreams and even more thrilled that it was only one block from downtown Nassau. About a week after moving in, we quickly realized that our new neighborhood, although filled with wonderful neighbors, many who are here tonight, was unfortunately not what we hoped for our children. Seeing as I'm a stay-at-home mom and homeschool my children, we spend a lot of time at home. I see firsthand every day how dangerous the roads are in the neighborhood. Before we moved here, going for walks used to be a daily occurrence, something that we all look forward to. However, now going for walks is stressful and honestly risky. Daily, I watch cars speeding through our neighborhood and running through stop signs. Drivers are often distracted on their thumbs as they whiz by us. It's almost as if drivers don't know that these streets are our neighborhoods, the place we raise our children, go for recreational walks, and live our daily life in and out. We are so grateful for the work of Youngsville Police lately. I understand that my neighborhood isn't easy to cut through due to all the traffic on Main Street, but what I don't understand is why more immediate action on, other than police occasionally pulling people over, it's not being taken. My friend and neighbor got hit on Main Street and rolled over the top of the car, cracking his head on windshield. Another friend and neighbor almost got hit while turning across the street recently. And it just sends chills down my spine to think about one of my children or other kids in the neighborhood being the victims of these careless drivers. I hate to say it, but I wonder if a tragic event would have to occur where serious action was taken. I pray that that's not the case, and our hope tonight is uniting as neighbors is to show how desperately we want to see changes in our neighborhood. A few months ago, I was sitting on my back porch visiting with friends, and we witnessed this speeding truck run into my neighbor's trash can and drag it all the way down past my property. He must have been having a bad day because he backed up furiously in my yard, leaving huge tracks in my yard in order to get the trash can out from under his truck, and then we see it just speed away again. I'm thankful that Youngsville Police jumped in so quickly, but it frightens me anytime I should go close to the end of our yard. I could have easily been a child in my trash can. Yet I attempted to base that my stories and experiences have been dramatized, but they are genuine, and I hope that you will hear my heart tonight. When we are, we are hoping to make an immediate change is to ask for the speed limit to be lowered, and for more people to be cool. And in the long run, deter unsafe drivers through our neighborhood. Initially pictured this being our forever home, and if it is, I hope Youngsville takes safety more seriously and moves to action quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Next up, we have Mason Rizzo.
It's the mayor, Mr. Bishop. Thank you for having me. Madam Clerk.
Maybe that's how, yes, I should have been.
So I don't have lots to say. I would like to just contribute some video to the testimony that you're hearing tonight. I pulled this from the two thousand and fifteen pedestrian and bicycle safety plan, or master plan, rather, that this board adopted. Regrettably, as you hear tonight, this is just not the case anymore. So, you know, what I want to do is just illustrate that while, while the four-way stop is supposed to be a deterrent, it isn't. So I've got to echo my thanks to all of my friends here tonight for all of the hard work that they do in our neighborhood. Mr. Page, please. But I do want to illustrate that what we have in the North Block of the Downtown Center is several conflict points where, you know, pedestrians have to share very unsafe spaces with frankly, you know, anywhere from distracted to bellicose motorists. Next slide. So here, you know, what I've got is a couple of examples to illustrate what we deal with. I mean, this, of course, is someone who is encroaching on my neighbor jogging just to get to the green light. Next slide, please. You know, here we have Ms. Preddy, who is out for one of her daily strolls, and, you know, obviously, what we are always hoping for is a full stop. But for whatever reason, we just don't have enough opportunity to commit safety to the drivers when we are out in our neighborhood. Next slide. Here we have my beloved and Lucy Garcia measuring for a sightline, and thank God they didn't have to go all the way out to the edge of the road. That truck would have probably killed one of them, and I'm very thankful that it didn't, Mr. Page. You know, here we have Ms. Smith and her two children, Juniper and Ruby, and this, I hope, illustrates some of the things that, that we deal with. Now, Ms. Lindsay's house is not occupied, but it will be someday, and it will likely have children. Here you see Blair and the kids stop for a second to talk to Ashley, and one of them had got distracted and decided to cross the street and had died. That car would have drugged them a couple of meters down across the street. Next slide, please, Mr. Page. Same thing when we have standstill traffic. Obviously, what we deal with is truly a crisis of conscience for our drivers, but we don't have the opportunity to demonstrate that in real time. Next slide, please. We can't even get the tow trucks and other special vehicles to provide safe motorists practices. Next slide. Even our friends in the local police force who are out there diligent, helping us with tractor trailers, can't get guys at the top. But it is, but yeah, across the street, but, you know, frankly, it is something that we generally think. The next slide, please, Mr. Page. You know, again, we have more illustrations of very heavy equipment that would take a long time to react to a pedestrian who has to share the space just by virtue of living on these streets. Next slide, please, Mr. Page. And, you know, what I fear is that, like my friend said here, one distraction is the difference between a, a, a driver who's not paying attention in a permanently altered life by one of my friends here with me tonight. Next slide, please, Mr. Page. You know, obviously, we've had a couple of romans with fall recycling, and those guys do trespass quite frequently against the best practices of, of safe driving. Next slide, please, Mr. Page. And what we fear, I think, is that there just isn't enough forces for deterrents. The roads invite the very kind of behavior that we see day in and day out. And that is not a limitation or failure of anyone in this room. It is just the new normal that we live in. And, you know, I think while it looks like an inconvenience to everyone here, it is truly the distance between life and death for some of us. Next slide, please, Mr. Page. And, you know, all it's going to take is one of these guys hitting fifty by the, by the four-way stop, and one of us is going to be a D spot. And I'm not trying to be hyperbolic, guys. I would just like, for my experience, not to be replicated, if I could help. The next slide, please, Mr. Page. So we are requesting help, and the first order of magnitude for us, I think, would be a limit. Speed reductions to twenty miles an hour on local main streets, and of course, a continued audience with, with all of you here. We truly appreciate it, and of course, we can't thank our, 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 of course.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Next up, Deidra Sully. Okay, tobacco prevention and control. Okay, all right. Mr. Lee Winslow.
Greetings. I'm here in, official pass, but before I start, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you. We truly enjoy the work you do. And it's because of people like you and your sacrifice. But my wife and I, we know all about sacrifice, which is why I'm going to get into, I'm here with the CBMA, where the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association. You're going to be seeing a lot more of us. We have been trying for the last five years to get my organization to push further, further up into the northern Raleigh area, because we have a ton of veterans up here, and a lot of them, a lot of them could use our help. What we do is we raise money and we help other veterans. Mainly, we do it because we like to ride motorcycles. So that's one of the things that gets us together. We are not an NC. We're actually a five oh one, three nineteen veteran service organization. So don't be alarmed when you see a bunch of motorcycles coming through with their vests on. We're not doing any of that stuff. We just love to ride and just get out and do things like that. And most of the time, it's to get out and get help other veterans, or we're still support other organizations in those capacities. Our slogan is, that's helping best, and we are very passionate, and we love to live by that. We do have a geographic area, but we don't have like, like NC's have like a clubhouse or territory. We're not like that. We just don't want kind of share like the same, same area. So when I say that this is our area, it's not really our area, but this is where I live, this is my home. I'm very passionate about helping veterans in our area. And I am a officer with the new chapter that's been starting here, so I can definitely help all the veterans in our area. So how, how can we, how do we do this? Like, our mission is to support and defend those and defend the country, right? That's, that's what we do. We're combat veterans. There's a lot of organizations that say they're here to help us. There's, there's a lot of the veterans, they don't really take those organizations to kingdom. So it usually falls on organizations like ours, like we're the groundwork. We will go to their homes, so we will help them out. We will help them financially. We can help them donations, whatever is needed, through workforce, camaraderie, things like that, or combinations, whatever we can do to improve the life of, of veterans. We do that through raising awareness through fundraising, like I said, through motorcycle events. So in those capacities, we, if we're coming through this way, for the safety of our, of our riders and for the safety of the citizens, we usually ask for law enforcement protection for that, just, just like that's where maybe stop the intersection stuff up there. And so, and I'll definitely contact. We also serve as liaison to the veterans in the community. So if they come to us saying they need some help, we can help them, like get to the BSO, other BSOs, whatever it is. We are very, we are a huge organization. We're not just national, we are worldwide. So there's, there's a lot of us. We are one of the biggest motorcycle organizations that there are better motorcycles organizations. That's about all I have. I appreciate every single one of you. Truly do, and thank you for your service to our, our town.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, and lastly, we have Hector and Mickey.
Hello.
I would prefer, yeah. You don't want to
Other than just asking about the driveway.
Oh, yeah, I didn't say anything. It's on the agenda. We're going to be talking about it in about five minutes.
Okay, well, I will tell y'all that just, I don't have, I don't have this written down, so I'm sorry about that. In fact, it's been a minute, but with the people that cross the street from us, you would have people drive down the street so fast. And I put onto an almost physical altercation with the driver. So they, they, he, it was like, I don't know, too fast, too furious. He was, he was trying to track his time. And I yelled at him and he stopped. And he literally drove back and rolled his window down and said some fancy words. And I have some fancy words back for him. But I just was alerting him that there were five children that lived across the street that frequently played in the street. And this was way before most of these people had lived here. So it's been a problem for a really long time. So it's obviously just progressing, but it's not just people speeding, like they'll, they'll double back and give you words if you don't like their driving style. So just just throwing that out there, just saying that.
Well, thank you so much. Were there any other citizens' comments before we move along into the consent agenda? All right. If you could state your name and your address for the
Across the street from Albert Lindsay, who was an absolute saint, although they still have Charles Carr, who's the closest I've ever met to John Wayne in real life. Unfortunately, they're both gone. Somebody is going to occupy both of those houses with children. And I think it's absolutely inherent that, and I'm not for, for something simple to be done. Rather than let's kick the can down the road. You can, the police officers, I would love to build an annex to my house because they're out there all the time. They can't be out there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. My wife has been accosted, Basin has been accosted. If you just come sit there, there would be cars coming down Franklin Street from Railroad Avenue, fifty miles an hour. And, and I'm not, I'm not being hyperbolic. The other day, I'm hard to miss because I'm fat and old. And when I'm crossing the street, this car doesn't even stop. This car is looking at his phone. I'm old and I'm well insured. My wife would be, I'm sure, absolutely hilarious to tell you if I get hit because she's got, but what is something that we can do? We, we don't need a committee. You have video, you have, you know, you have testimony. What is it we can do? We can't put speed humps. I would love for you to put speed humps out there, you know, simply for comic relief. Because if they're not paying attention, they're looking like Evel Knievel in the seventies. I, I am pleading with you, something simple, stripes. Whatever. I know nothing about, you know, traffic control, but just something simple to slow them down because it's it's, it's gotten beyond out of control. It's an amazing thing to see a fully loaded dump truck doing thirty-five miles an hour that doesn't even hint about stopping at a stop sign. That dude ain't stopping at the stop sign. He's got places to go, hates to see. Mom's got soccer games to go to. I understand all, we're in a busy world, but we're in a world where we are focused on me. We're not focused on we and I would love for the the town to focus on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buddy. All right. Any additional citizens' comments?
His wife, Ashley. And so I visit it often and I cannot even believe some of the things I've seen going over there.
Mr. Just before we get too far, could you give us your address for the
So unbelievable. And it's just gotten progressively worse. At one point I went over and I said, is there something going on that they could do? I cannot believe the amount of traffic going through there. Fastly different from what they first moved in. But also, we live off of Camille and Blue Heron Drive. And we have issues as well. We're just stop sign. You come into the, you can take a right into the cul-de-sac where we live. Or you can take, you can go straight into the cul-de-sac or left and up. What's that little thing?
Black swan?
Yeah. A lot of construction and nobody stops at the stop sign. Nobody. My neighbors have put boulders, my neighbors have put logs, my neighbors have tried everything to get people not to drive across their lawns and up. And it's usually a lot of construction. We've been really pleased with the police presence. They tried, but they've sat across the street to them in the morning, it's over the clock, just hanging out, trying to help us with the problem. But the kids are getting older and the cul-de-sac and they're all starting to play hockey and, you know, ball and stuff. And it's scary for them. I stop every single time because it's a stop sign. And when I took the driver's ed, the stop sign made me stop. And I live there and it's like a few feet, but I always stop and put a lever on. And if there's somebody behind me, they're just going to have to wait. But the problem is getting bigger and it's, I'm really glad to see that some patients like Masons because it's pretty young. I think it really gives a good impact. But thank you to the police officers and hopefully we can level some submissions for our town because we love it too. You know, more and more people are moving in and the developing is unbelievable. Infrastructure's not here. But we need to really take it seriously because, you know, somebody is going to get hurt. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call for citizens' comments. All right. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. You see items A through I here. What is the pleasure of the board in regards to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There is no old business to discuss. We'll move along into new business. So item A under new business is temporary construction easement agreement, MTS REL LLC Holden Road. Action requested here is to authorize the town manager and attorney to approve the temporary construction easement contention on approval of the variance by the Board of Adjustment for Holden Village sidewalk on Holden Road. Mr. Page, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that before we?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This was a follow-up from a previous discussion that we had with the developers who were going to build the sidewalk immediately across from the proposed Holden Village, which is down in the vicinity of the Wake Electric substation on Holden Road. In, instead of doing that, they proposed building it in closer to downtown, having the next link from the neighborhood Holden Creek Preserve across the street from it, but further closer to downtown. So it would be, it would serve the same residence, but it would be a portion that might not otherwise get built and would be between downtown from this neighborhood and Laurel Oaks and will be pre-preserved.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right. Hearing none. Again, the action requested is to authorize town manager and attorney to approve the temporary construction easement contention on approval of the variance by the Board of Adjustment for the Holden Village sidewalk on Holden Road. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion of potential raised grant funding fiscal year ending 2025 or payment from fund balance fiscal year end 2024 for engineering design of Youngsville bypass. Mr. Page, I'll turn the back over to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This one's a tough one. So I'll go to this slide and we're going to reference the red portion and the green portion. As the board is aware, they directed staff to begin the process for the bypass. And the Youngsville Board of Commissioners actually chose to have a higher tax rate to move this project forward. The question before us is, there's an opportunity to apply for a raised grant that would fund the design of the Cedar Creek portion and the Highway ninety-six South portion. If we were to apply for that grant, it would be more than a half million dollars. It would be awarded to the town of Youngsville for the design of that. And the town will be responsible for, I believe it's ten percent match against those funds. If we don't proceed in that direction, town received the quote for designing just the red portion. And that's about $260,000 for the engineering to thirty percent. That would include communication with NC DOT and the stormwater analysis that would tee us up for a NEPA application. If we, if we go the route of the grant, of course, we save those funds and we can utilize those funds on our street network elsewhere. But it would also potentially delay the construction of that portion of the bypass by a year because we would apply in October of 2026 instead of October of 2025 for funds for construction.
So what we need to do is figure out which direction we want to go and then direct you guys to have at it.
Yeah, and the two are build the red as fast as possible from our own pocket. Build the red and the blue on the federal dime.
And what is the probability of getting that grant?
I asked the very same question of the consultants that highlighted it for us. It was Bolton and Mink who are the ones who are working on the like you on it. They did some of the hotspot analysis that we did. And, and they said that they think that it is a very competitive grant. It is likely at least fifty percent, probably more, but they said at least fifty percent that we would get those funds.
What's the difference in timing? Can you estimate that?
One year.
So it would take one year longer?
We would still have a match.
Just to get the money.
We would still have a match on the federal piece, correct? The red and the blue?
Yes, sir.
Ten percent or twenty percent?
So theoretically, it's let's say half a million. So it's fifty from the town to, but delayed a year. But we're not just getting the red design. We're also getting the next piece design. What would be our timeline if we go with red? What's the timeline for us to then design the blue? Yeah, okay. So yeah, we could design the red. We could pay out of pocket and design the red right now. Or we could apply for the grant. Get some of the money that I'm paying generously to the federal government. Delay the red a year, but maybe expedite the blue. Would, it was kind of what would happen?
It would definitely expedite.
As I was saying, we'd be expediting the blue but delaying the red.
So one and seven two in the bush, what we're talking about. I mean, honestly, I mean, you know, if it's it's on the border camp, how long is it going to take to get the damn bypass anyway, right? How long is it going to take? Two thousand and fifty, I wouldn't be alive. Happy people won't be alive. I, I think what was shared today by our constituents, the same people who live on the same streets that I do want it now. If we, if I'm if I heard you correctly, we increased, we, we kept our taxes at a certain level for that particular piece, correct?
Yes, sir. And we have the funds for it.
But what are we waiting on?
Okay.
Is there a possibility that we, we fund the red and then apply for that blue for the grant?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Whatever the, whatever the quickest way to get trucks and stuff off, off our main areas downtown is the thing that we need to be looking at. I mean, the same sentiment, these same folks have just came up here and talked about it, same sense I've been talking about for I've been on this board seventeen years. Been talking about it the whole dang time. So, you know, especially we get people off the streets and, you know, because, and the reason why folks were going through what they're going through with increased traffic in, in, on Winston Street going up Nassau, going up going by, going back out to Main Street was because we were doing all that stuff at Five Points and they were all trying to get around a bunch of those lights. And then freeze traffic on Railroad Street and Franklin Street was because they were trying to beat the damn people that were on Winston Street to the light. I know it's true.
So
If that's the way we move, if we've already, we already planned for it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't think about it. If we can, if we can try to do the blue line like Corey said, you know, if we can, if we can look at trying to get some funding on that, great. But if not, we got to move.
I was going to say, is that, is that kind of consensus across the table?
I mean
Directing staff to move.
We got the money.
They probably could have picked a better town to come in and talk about this.
Yeah, we got the money, let's get it done. But I'd love to try to go for that grant with the blue, like to speed up the blue too. Anything we can do.
The, any way we can recoup our funds or, or try to keep our funds in our pocket, that's great. But in the meantime, we got to be moving the ball.
Well, that's all I'm saying, the blue side, just because we don't, I just said, like, with the timeline on that, it's like, well, it's not, it's not going to be that one anyway. So let's strike on the blue with the, try to strike the blue with the grant. And I mean, we already got the money for the rent, so let's
To be totally transparent here, we are still, we, I didn't stop the red. I got the quote from the engineer. Checked it, made sure we had the money in the budget. And then emailed it to NC DOT and said, will this work and will it, if it, if it gets designed this way, is it eligible for federal funding? Because it's going to take federal funding to build it through the LAP project, right? So it's waiting on them to respond. There hasn't been any, like, delay built into this. It hasn't been that we're, oh, we paused everything for this meeting. That's all still going on. But this was a potential opportunity that came up by that the folks who did the hotspot study that were looking for other ways to work with the town of Youngsville because they liked, frankly, the people, the board and the staff here.
So, you know, a question I got earlier this week from a neighbor on Winston Street was what am I really getting for my taxes? So we had to have a little class right there in the driveway. And that class went to police protection, benefits from the town, on that, all that stuff, but mainly that. You won't know where your taxes are where they are because we can do stuff like this. And this gives us, this, this makes us look like we are trying to do something to curb the problem. And, and that's, you know, I think all the folks, I mean, you know, the same guys that he had probably was on that video, it's the same guys that I've probably thrown rocks at before. And I've cussed at and had words with. So not a problem with me. Let's just move on forward with this stuff.
Sounds like there is a consensus. Commissioner Redd. Did you go with that direction?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Percy? Mr. Brain? I think Commissioner Johnson.
Since he said it and Commissioner Wiggins, you go with that. So there's that census right there. The directing staff on how to proceed there. Any additional questions, comments or concerns before we move into item C? All right. Item C is accept donation of new Luddy Park flagpole and installation by the Youngsville Masonic Lodge. The action requested here is to accept the donation.
So move. Second.
All right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, resolution of intent to close a portion of Marsh Street and set public hearing for January ninth, twenty twenty-five. and set public hearing for January 9th, 2025. Until like three years ago, I didn't know there was a Marsh Street. Yeah, I thought it was straight, then I look at the map and it's curved and that's the whole thing. But anyway, so need to set a public hearing for that for January 9th, 2025. Do I hear a motion to adopt that resolution?
I have a question.
Can you?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second, and now we're in discussion.
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, it, this is like, and you guys live there, it's a grass patch between y'all's yard. So technically, I could just whip my truck down and ride back and forth through y'all's yard.
Yes.
More or less. I, and I've mentioned, I did reach out to staff, just asked about, I was like, the, I'm, I'm completely okay with closing, closing it. But if we're going to close it, is there, is there a lot of pushback to leave the other 150 foot open? Or could we just say, let's just?
So you recommend losing it all the way to Winston Street?
Yeah, just close, like, close the road. Like, it's, it's not a road. At the end of the day, it's, back in the day, I'm sure it was, because you can see the old property lines that there used to be, you know, stick people that only had access to Marsh Street.
So now it's.
Sand and the whole thing and just shut it, I mean.
Yeah, I was. Okay, sure. I looked it up, it's literally their property, property to the north, a property on the east side to the north, or property on the east side to the south. There's no one on there, there's no, like, all those properties have been, like, brought together into like two, into four big, big properties. That we're going to close it. I mean, it doesn't, I, I like, I'm with you guys, but we might as well just close the little piece on the north side too.
It's a great idea. If the board wanted to do that, what I would recommend, just because the process takes so long. We have to post it in the newspaper for a month, and it has to be posted site on the site on both ends of where the street closure is for, I think it's six weeks. The process is cumbersome. So because they went to the effort of having the survey done, maybe a good idea to proceed with this one and direct staff to have the survey done to close the rest of it.
I, I mean, that sounds feasible to me, so, um, does, do we need to amend that then?
No.
Okay.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with a public hearing for this. And then if we, if something needed to be amended down the road for the total closure, we could, we can cross that bridge later on. All right, so again, we got a first and a second. We're still in discussion period. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Can you approve?
I'd like to amend the resolution to close theirs for now and direct staff to Nathan's.
I think that would be to be a separate motion.
I was gonna say, okay, that's all I was saying, like, okay. Then.
When I say.
I said, and you just kept, you like.
I said, any other things or concerns? I didn't hear anything, so I called for a vote. Okay, so let me, I'm gonna, please. All right, I'm gonna call for that. Again, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to direct staff to look into closing the north side of Marsh Street as well.
All right, with the understanding too, that that would be, X, I can't see anything because you made, you put a motion on the table.
Oh, yeah. So we've got a motion. Nathan's recommendation earlier about he, that's how we're doing it, what he, what staff recommended. The motion is for, as staff recommended, to close the north side. I'm good with that. Starting the process, yes.
All right, so we've got a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this prior to going to vote?
Um, I do. Is that going to cost the town because they have to do the survey?
Yes.
How much money will that cost the town?
Eight hundred.
It, it, it actually may be more than that, but it would, it wouldn't be much more. They do have to flag any property stakes that are along it. There may be more than just the four that are flagged on this survey. But it, it shouldn't be more than 2,500. We have funds available for.
And that's worthwhile, just making sure everybody feels like it's worthwhile.
We're maintaining the property right now, aren't we?
No, no, no.
We're not doing, it's not, yeah.
And if I can take $2,500 and put it towards sidewalk.
But it was.
You know, just say, I know that money doesn't work like that.
Well, but the good news is it'll return to the tax rolls because instead of being public property, it'll become private property and then it'll increase the yards of the people that do it.
He was saying that the whole time. Fantastic. That's fantastic.
Is that what you were thinking?
It wasn't that, I just think that the, I think that the grass road through the middle of town is just kind of weird.
That no one ever knew about.
That's, I did know about it because.
I like that Google Maps has it as a U-turn around the house.
Um, that's the end of my discussion. We're in the middle of a.
All right, any additional discussion? Any additional discussion before I call for a vote? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, okay? And item E, resolution to set a public hearing for January 9th, 2025 and begin the process to close the northern portion of the 100 block of South College Street, which is the portion that we're trying to abandon right in between Burn Barrel and Benchmark Bank. I think it's going to be beneficial for the town, but we still need to have a public hearing on that, so. All right, we got a first from Commissioner Redd.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Brain. Any discussion before we move to vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, the only piece here is it will maintain utility easements across it because there's a water line and there's stormwater. There may be others, but as long as it's a broad utility easement, it'll be maintained.
Perfect, okay. With our comp plans and multimodal plan? I think we brought this up and I, you know, we were, it was like, I will look into it and we haven't really talked, you know, it's been such a little project for five points. I know there was mention of like maintaining some sort of little pedestrian easement through it so that we can tie into the existing sidewalks. Is that something that we could, okay, all right. I didn't know where we stood on that. I didn't know what the final result after all the five point stuff was.
Got any additional discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, moving along into reports and other business. So we've got a couple of things here. One, tree lighting, February, February, Jesus, Pete, it's been a long day. Friday the 6th, the longest running Christmas parade in the state of North Carolina will be held right on that Main Street Saturday the 7th. As we get into Thanksgiving, wanted to tell everyone Happy Thanksgiving and I hope the holiday season treats you well. The last thing before we move on and forget, so obviously we've heard a lot of commentary about, you know, reducing speed limits and things of that nature. Madam Clerk, I don't know how you want this to show, but like, as far as like directing staff, could we look, take a look at 20 miles per hour or even 15, just to see what that would look like? I don't know how the commissioners feel about that, but clearly there, there is an issue in that area. It's something that we've known about. Lest anyone thinks otherwise, we have absolutely been busting our asses trying to get things done. Not, not only for that area, but for the traffic congestion as a whole in the town. We've had to take a lot on our shoulders just moving the bypass to the point where it's at now. So the commentary about kicking the can down the road and doing things like that, if you haven't seen, if you haven't been to one of these meetings to see what we've been doing, you've been missing out. So I don't know how you want that to be. I mean, if you want it in a motion, we could put it in a motion. Or if you just want me to say, we're directing staff, if we want to get consensus on that.
If we want to lower a speed limit on a road, it needs to be specific what the new speed limit is and what the road is. So a, a recommended motion might be to lower the speed limit on North Cross Street from Winston to Main Street to 20 miles per hour. And that can be added then into the, like on the name of it, but there's a specific book that then means that when those speed limit signs are put up, they become enforceable because if our Public Works Director goes and takes a sign down and puts up another sign, it doesn't have the force of law. Only you guys have the force of law.
And then they are ordinances, because the ordinance is specific on what moves and what's weak.
And does that give you guys more teeth to ride more significant traffic tickets if that limit is reduced and they're exceeding about 15, 20 miles an hour?
Yes, if we do it as a. Like we do with the trucks.
I think it needs to be, I think, I think it needs to be townwide and not just these couple of streets. I think it needs to go down to 15 miles an hour all throughout Franklin, railroad, on that side going, anything downtown in that, in that area, needs to be 15 miles an hour, period.
Can we? Okay.
We can name the streets. I mean, we can get a list of streets together and, and do it at the next meeting or whatever we need to do. It needs to be done. We need to take that downtown quarter, got a quadrant, that downtown area, and it needs to be 15 miles an hour. No, we have fans or butts.
If I may. Yes, sir. Another suggestion for you want to consider is if you have a ordinance prohibiting self-driving vehicle driving, if you adopt such an ordinance, you could impose civil penalties for that.
That was a state.
I, I believe we can have a municipal prohibition as well with, with a civil penalty attached to it and give some additional enforcement teeth to that. Or, you know, we could review that and, and bring information to the next meeting. If the board says.
Well, even if I change these speed limits, you still got streets like Nassau that are state routes. We can't change those without the state.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we can petition the state for that, and, and that would probably be a little bit more of a lengthy process, but I mean, this is something that's actionable that we could do in, in more of a short term, so.
Is all of Nassau state? Because.
Main Street out.
Nassau Straits are estates, South Nassau, this town, while we were able to put that one there ago.
And the speed limit right now is about 60.
Oh. What?
I think if you get there at five o'clock in the morning.
Nassau State crosses town, road and railroad.
Can we not do it at, at least to Winston Street or Anderson Street or whatever that is down there? Can we not do the speed limit on our terms for that till it goes out to the country?
We can.
Okay.
So it might be similar to the Marsh one, it might be a good idea to affect some of that tonight and then figure out what the other ones can be and what we want to do.
Can I make, would it work as a motion to say lower speed limits on the east-west streets excluding Main Street? So Winston, Franklin, Persimmon and Pine to a 15 mile an hour speed limit between the intersections of College Street and Nassau Street? Would that work? Because I'd be like.
The only thing I would suggest is a specific speed limit rather than just lower speed.
Okay, sorry, lower speed, let's say, lower speed at 215 between College Street and Nassau Street on all east-west streets excluding Main Street, Winston.
And you want the north-south as well.
Well, yeah, but, yeah. Was like, I was trying to remember the north-south. I remember the four east-west, I was like, okay, those are easier.
I just looked, it looks like Town Chapel Hill tried that, that's from that, so maybe we can't do the local ordinance or so. You can certainly reduce the speed.
Then I will.
Road Street.
Hang, hang on a sec. Yeah, no, no commentary from the. So, do, do you need a moment to write, to jot that down?
Yeah. Just so I can remember all the streets, I don't miss one.
There's several of them over there.
Yeah, I know, that's why I wanted to write them down.
Yeah, free school right there.
Yeah, I wanted to get them in order, yeah.
Your technology over there too.
There you go.
All right.
I'm the who. We lowered the speed limit to 15 mile an hour on Pine, Persimmon, Franklin, Winston, southeast, northeast, southwest, northwest railroad, Cross Street and Hillsborough Street.
It would only be on North Cross Street.
For the little section. Or only on north. Yes, okay, on North Cross Street.
Okay, so we got.
Which about Nassau.
Yep, that's perfect. And South Nassau as well. Okay, you like, I like, I forgot the red closest to me.
Can you, yeah. Do you have, do you have that as a motion so you can repeat it back? Because that was a lot of, that was a lot to unpack, okay. Okay, so we've got a first. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That's it for my report. I hope to see, I really do hope to see everybody out for the tree lighting and the parade and Happy Thanksgiving. And I'll move along to Commissioner Redd for her report.
Well, sorry, I was distracted. One of my very many, too many children called me, was in a car accident.
Oh.
Um, but he's fine. It's great. His land insurance will go up when I'm asleep. Um, so I'm a little distracted.
Understood.
But everything's great. Thanksgiving, if anybody's bored, there's 5K Wake Forest. We already have 1,800 people registered. It's going to be really fun. Feel free to come out and support the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I'm looking forward to the Christmas parade because Emily always kills it organizing everything and it's really fun.
And my suit came in the day, so I'm excited about that.
And I might even get a suit too. If there was wear suits, that would be cool. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Percy?
Um, so there's been a couple of holiday markets in the area. Wait for, with, in combination with Franklin County or the Greater Franklin Chamber of Commerce had a holiday market. It clocked it at about 1,500-ish, people came through the doors. They had 130 vendors with another 85 on a waitlist. There, so it was, I mean, it was very much very local, a lot of local Youngsville, Frankleton people. The local business merchants in town will be holding their holiday market?
Yes.
Okay. See all the signs, I forget which one, what called, you know, the holiday market November 23rd. So come support your local businesses here in downtown Youngsville.
That's actually before Thanksgiving, so I'm glad we had that conversation today.
Yeah, it's before Thanksgiving.
Time is like an illusion nowadays for some people, so. Anything else, Commissioner Percy?
All I got.
All right, Commissioner Brain?
Uh, just before tonight's meeting, I attended a ribbon cutting ceremony for a new Wake Med location. It's in Wake Forest, but really close to us. It's over by the Lowe's Home Improvement and Wegmans. So more facilities closer to us instead of going all the way to North Raleigh. They said it's already filling up with physicians in there. They offer a bunch of different services in there. I forget all of them, orthopedic, primary for adult and pediatrics, cardio. I think it's pretty much everything but like ER and oncology. But just a, a nice location. And I, and I told Andy Curtis with Wake Med that hopefully we'll be having a ribbon cutting up here one day.
Yeah.
I know it's not in Youngsville, but it is closer to us and like many of you, you probably go to Wake Med for your services now, so have more options. We have, I just got the invite today. Campo is holding a joint meeting with the Durham Chapel Hill MPO for the, I just had it up, Rail Visioning Committee, Subcommittee for Regional Rail Investment in the Triangle Area. So I'll be attending that on December, December 6th, so just before tree lighting ceremony. Uh, looking forward to that. Obviously with the S-line coming through, it's going to be a big, big part of that vision. So looking forward to seeing what we can do there. Looking forward to seeing what we can do there. The next Campo meeting is next Wednesday. That's all that.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
I think I'll prove one, so I'll need to say tonight.
Okay. And Commissioner Wiggins? All right, um, moving along to our esteemed legal counsel, um, floor is yours. Do, if you have anything that you wanted to add or?
Take any Barbara Johnson's student, right? I could be standing in front.
Good deal. Well, thank you for being here and helping us out, and, um, uh, I'll turn things over to staff for any updates, um, questions, comments, or concerns.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the board directed staff previously to begin a pedestrian enforcement activity on Main Street. And, uh, we had started the process of that, but unfortunately, we had a key player, uh, taken out of the game by some unfortunate events. They will get back to that, and we will do pedestrian enforcement downtown. Um, and I have a particular ask of everyone here. Well, I'll get to that in just a second. While most of the neighborhood is here, we are repaving East Franklin Street and North Cross Street. Um, that was in the budget for, to, to do this year. It should happen in the spring, but some of the culvert, culvert wo, work will happen in the, in the meantime. The, the board has agreed to do temporary closures in the area to make it as cost-effective as possible. There will be very infrequent times where you won't be able to get near a drive. By that, I mean, maybe a half an hour while they're working right in front of you. But if you see that, um, there is a road closed sign, those who know will go on Railroad and then come in through East Franklin. We'll close it off on, uh, the other ways while there are folks working in the streets. Um, and that should happen, um, it was supposed to happen already, but it should happen sometime in the spring. You should be getting a letter for that right in front of when it happens, but I just wanted to share that with you, because so much of the neighborhood is here. Um, and then lastly, it is so hard to notice that a street light is out, because it's, it's the absence of something, right? If there's a street light that's bright, you see it. If you, if you drive by it and you've never seen a street light there, it's very hard to notice it. So if anyone ever notices a street light out, um, I just pull up Duke Energy, report a street light out, and I type it in the same way everybody else does. There's a whole number on the poll, and if you have that poll number, generally speaking, Duke fixes it within three days. The town pays seventy thousand dollars a year for street lights, so we're paying for those whether they're lit up or not. It's just hard for us to notice them. So anyone who ever notices a street light that's out, please let us know. And the one at the intersection of, um, Franklin and Cross was reported in this way, and I believe Mr. Rizzo did that one, and it took him, I don't know, forty-eight hours for Duke to get out here and get it repaired. After he mentioned that there wasn't enough light there, and I went, I'm like, there is a light here. It just didn't come on.
Sure.
Uh, just a, a plea to, if you ever notice a street light out, let us know or let Duke know.
Do we have that on the website where people can self-report?
There's a link to how to report a street light out.
Okay.
Um, you can also just let town staff know, and we can get in. Um, we just do need that whole number.
When we, when we, uh, when the light went out at the base of our driveway on Winston Street, um, we went through the process, and at that time, they had a comment section where you could, you want to, you want to make sure these, when people going to do it, a lot of the, so Fonzie and I travel all over this great country, Southeastern United States, and a lot of the Duke Energy folks are starting to put these purple lights up. I don't know if you've seen them, but when you do, they suck. So when you put it in the comment section, no purple light, that's, just put that in there, and they, they will not put it in it.
If you go to Wake Forest right now, they are lit up with them.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 and when you go to other parts of the state, and you're like, man, these people, ET coming on. I mean, it's not, i- i- it's really, you can't see nothing, really. It's like a black light. If you're a seventies kid like me, it really looks like.
It's pretty rough. Thank you. Mr. Page, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Mr. Mayor, you, you asked that I remind you that we did adopt fee schedule for the twenty-five dollar shirts, and I think you wanted to describe them.
Did I want to describe it?
A picture of that shirt.
Um, I don't have it on me, but I mean, what I would just recommend for everyone who wants a, a piece of Youngsville memorabilia, you know, representing the longest running Christmas parade in the state of North Carolina. Again, every chance I, every time I get a chance to say it, I'm gonna say it. Um, and not only, not only that, right, it's one thing to have the longest running Christmas parade in the state of North Carolina, but when you get one of these long sleeve t-shirts, it helps out with the cop. So I think that's an amazing thing there. Um, as far as the fee schedule and stuff like that, we did that in in the consentance, so that piece of it's good. So if you want a long sleeve, uh, t-shirt, again, representing the longest running Christmas parade in the state of North Carolina, swing by Town Hall, what is our price? Is it twenty, twenty-five? Twenty-five bucks for a long sleeve t-shirt is a pretty dab on.
About soon as you get a Bungey Rocket.
Or that. Did I, is that what you were wanting from me, or did I?
I thought there was gonna be a second on the intersection of Osmondus, but.
I forgot.
Oh, well, yeah. We just do what we can there, so.
Awesome, awesome. Um, are there any additional questions, comments, concerns? Uh, any updates from staff?
Some. Well, with these schedules, if you'll notice, a lot of these essentially Centennial items, uh, have come in. There are still a few that need to be, um, there are still a few, maybe. Mary Company on Main Street is helping to sell. You can also. But the coins and lapel bands, the braces and keychains, wrist beads, the rockets, rubber ducks and stress balls, the hats and the t-shirts, um, are in, and I should have the t-shirts and the hats to Mary and Company tomorrow. Um, we also have, um, etch glass. The canter, there's also a rocks glass and a Christmas tree ornament. All of that would be etch glass. We are doing some tumblers, the bottle openers. There's a wooden box. There's two packs of cards and bikes in there. It's really neat looking. Um, and we will have the adult shirts and youth shirts as well that will be available, um. Right now, it's a limited color for different colors, four for adults and only two for the children. Um, but all of that will be available either Town Hall and Mary and Company's, and we just set those prices. We will have a table at the Holiday Market with more information, and you should get to buy some stuff there as well. The companies tend to wait till close to the end of the year before they pay. Um, I don't know if you noticed in your agenda packet that we had only collected around thirty percent of the prices. The mortgage payments that came in for over eight hundred thousand, and it brought us up to fifty, fifty-six point thirty-eight percent, so we're halfway through our taxes. Reminder notices will go out early December. Um, so the big payment that I was waiting to have come in, so we're good with that, and then Holiday Market has been stolen, so we're good on that. Other than that, that was all.
Outstanding. All right, um, if there are no additional updates, uh, there's no need to go into closed session. Still move along in the item twelve, which is adjourned. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hear none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed? We are started eight eighteen.